And we're gonna let them introduce themselves, and we'll start here.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, thank you for staying clear. I know it is, so I appreciate that very much. My name is Lorena Chavez, and I am the current Board Vice President for Eastside Union High School District. So I am a native of San Jose. I was born and raised here in the east side. My parents immigrated from Mexico, and myself and a lot of my brothers were raised here. I went to Yerba Juana High School. I have been a teacher in the east side. I started my career as a math teacher at Matson Middle School in Allen Rock. I've been a principal in middle school as well. And I currently work for an education nonprofit. So my whole professional career has mostly been here in the east side of San Jose, but also very much grounded in education and really focused on education and equity. Ensuring that our students have access, all of our students, regardless of what zip code they come from the east side, have what they need to itself. Y'all probably know that the east side is large, right? It's about half of the city of San Jose, and so it's a pleasure to be here.
Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone. My name is Monwe. I am also trustee of Eastside Union High School District, and this will be reelection for my fourth term. And I will appreciate District 8 roundtable steering committee to host this event. And to talk back a little bit of my background is, right now, I'm a businesswoman, and I've been involved in the community for the 35 years, including the 12 years that I served on Eastside School Board Trustee. And to me, that I still want to be involved in the community as well as to represent the student voice from east side. I remember that the first time that I and my family left Vietnam, and I really want to do something to give it back to this community. And that's why I've been involved in the community. And I ran 2010, and that's why I made it there too.
My name is Monwe. Monwe Herrera, first initial J. J. Monwe Herrera. I'm currently Board President for the Eastside Union High School District. I grew up here and have seen a change over the years. Started school, public schools here in the 1950s, can you imagine? Dropped out of kindergarten because they weren't ready for kids like me. I spoke only Spanish. Graduated from Overfell High School on scholarships, studying in India, traveled through Asia and Europe, and I studied in Mexico and worked on Capitol Hill, all part of undergraduate. In my former master's program, I was one of 20 National Order Fellows that took me to an institute at Yale with Yale and Harvard professors, and then a special assistant to the mayor of Seattle. I got amazing opportunities, and I owe it to public education. I could say one, but around time, scale.
So there are three seats up, correct? You are the three incumbents, correct?
Three incumbents, one non-incumbent who's not here.
But you are the three incumbents. So why do you think the three incumbents came tonight? Starting with you. Two minutes. Well, really, it's hard. Of course, if that's the first question. We're gonna answer this. No, for all of you, this is the question, probably.
So the question is, why do I think the three incumbents came?
The incumbents came.
Tonight. Great. So I can speak for myself, and I think my colleagues here would agree or disagree, not verbally, but as I speak. We've been together through some of the hardest moments in education through the pandemic. And despite the pandemic and trying to figure out how to support not just our students, but our community as a whole, because this really was a community effort, we grew together, we learned together, and saying, yes, I'm coming back, and I want to make sure that we continue supporting our community through the pandemic, speaks loudly, right, of who we are, not just as individuals, but as a collective board. And so I think us coming here today saying, we're in it together, we're committed to the work, and let's go.
Well, I believe that the three of us, we've been working very well together as a board. And I know we might have differences, but we still come up with the good solution and the good decision for our community, actually for our east side district. And I'm glad that three of us came tonight. We should, we care. We care to get everyone to know about us, and why do they want to reelect us? And I'm really proud of my colleagues that endorse me, as well as we endorse them back, because I know that we have a lot of job to do, and we want to continue on track. And I'm very sure that, you know, all of these people out there will really know that on our side, we are working very hard for our student, and we put our student first. And that's why we continue to work together, and we want to have the difference, you know, in our students.
Anyone who understands this community would never miss a candidate for District 8 community roundtable. This is, I think, from a forward-looking, one of the sharpest community groups that San Jose has. And I say that generally, and with all respect. This is one of the best boards that I have worked with in my time with the Eastside Union High School District Board of Trustees. We listen to each other, we are persuaded by each other, and, you know, and everyone has their own style as to how, I would disavow it. I would say, for example, that Lorena Chavez is one of the most passionate people I have encountered on the board. Energy and emotion, you know. But she has swung the room one and once, and swung me off the position just from her fervor and her belief. I really enjoy working with this board, and I really feel like what's happening now is that with the current superintendent, who's still relatively new, and his leadership team and this board, we are poised for really breakthrough times in the life of our kids and our families. And I say amen to that.
Thank you. This is first, next was to you. You mentioned COVID-19. What do you believe you learned from COVID-19? What actions worked, and what would you have done differently?
That's a very good question, Rob. And I know that our students, as well as teachers, staff have been through two years with COVID-19. A lot of lessons to learn is what we know that a lot of administrators, teacher did not, were not trained as a social worker. And it's gonna be very difficult for them, because they take away of their teaching time to help, you know, do testing, help, you know, a student to come back to learn distance learning. But in a lot of, a lot of portion that I'm really looking to is, you know, how can we help a student during the time that they lost all of this time during the COVID-19? And how can we support them with the mental health issue, with the social emotional, and a lot of things that we're gonna have to dive in, to really look into what portion that we're gonna have to help. In terms of make a difference in our district that I think that we will have need more funding to work, you know, to help more teachers, and as well as to free them the time so they can do a better job, especially with the distance learning, with the, you know, the course that the student will have to take it, you know, during the time that they're gonna have to make it up. But I think we need some more teachers to support them, to spend more time with them, and so they can encourage them to continue to ask questions, to stay more later after school, to really support them so they can learn, and they will be encouraged to really have a better environment so they can go back to school.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. COVID-19 was mentioned. What do you believe you learned from COVID-19? What actions worked, and what would you have done differently?
One thing that we all learned is that there is an amazing, an amazing capacity in us in every sector to rise to the challenges. We had no idea, I mean, right along with our public health officials and other people who were, you know, making decisions affecting our school district, we stumbled forward and we created something that held together. And as it went into the second year, we started to refine how we were engaging. And we discovered, sadly, that the structural inequities in our society were revealed in a very glaring way, that those in the poorer neighborhoods were suffering the most, and those also were where there was a gap still in capacity for technology and necessary broadband, or even environments in the home space that could support a learning process. These, this kind of was sobering to know that in spite of all our efforts, the structural inequities persist to a degree that really caused all of us to address them as part of what we do for our community. So COVID continues to be a teacher, and yet I'm confident that we have everything in us to meet whatever comes to us. Thank you.
Thank you. I think my colleagues mentioned a lot of great important points. Something that I would add to that is, teaching and learning, in the way that we teach and we learn, it hasn't really changed for hundreds of years. It's been very, very similar, and it wasn't necessarily set up to serve every student. This is why, this is one of the reasons why our education inequities exist. And so I think that COVID really shined light on that, especially when all of us then, we had to go home. It's like, alright, everybody, pack all your books. If you have a computer, take it home, because we'll be back in two weeks. Yeah, those two weeks turned into two months, two months turned into a year, a year turned into almost two years, right? And so what do we do in the meanwhile? How do we ensure that we support not just our students, but our teachers, right? So really, a lot of learning on learning and teaching. And that's honestly what we're still trying to figure out. What does that look like? And for me, this is one of the most exciting parts of this situation, because, yes, let's, let's really see the issue for what it is, but what can we glean from this? What can we learn from this? It's something that I'm all speaking about, and it's honestly one of the big reasons why I'm running for reelection, right? Because we're in the middle of learning. We're at a point where we can take learning and teaching to another level and be the leaders in that. Eastside is the leaders in a lot of things. So I'm like, yes, let's figure this out. Let's do this together, and this is the time. Something else that I learned was, well, not that I learned, it had already existed, was the digital divide. But COVID exacerbated the digital divide in a way that I never imagined would have been possible. And so one of the things that became very clear is what community is within the east side? Okay, and so I'm being, I'm being cut off. I will make sure to come back to you. Go ahead.
Ma'am, Monwe, come to you. You mentioned about the size of Eastside. So that's what gets hard, because it sounds big.
Can you speak a little into the microphone?
You talked about the size of Eastside. It's actually larger than some state assembly or senate districts. How would you handle community outreach and community engagement because of this?
So the Eastside Union High School District is the largest high school district in Northern California. There are half a million people residents within the boundaries of this school district. It spans the spectrum of socioeconomic, you know, levels, and it is like United Nations. I think 52 primary languages spoken by our students, where English is not their primary language. So communicating is crucial. And we, in recent years, created a marketing and communications office with a person who's dedicated to identifying our audiences and targeting information to them. We do a very sophisticated summary of each board meeting with an encapsulation of the issue and its resolution, and we ship that out. We have been proactive in so many ways. And ultimately, though, one thing that we found that has moved the needle is that we instituted board-level focus groups where we bring key stakeholders to the table, parents, students, site administrators, bargaining unit representatives, and whoever else is affected by an issue that has reached the board for consideration. These focus groups provide more than a two-minute commentary in a public meeting, more than, you know, it gives us an exchange and an interchange, and allows the board to pursue lines of inquiry and be educated, for everybody to be educated in this cross, you know, communication that occurs. So we're serious about communicating with our stakeholders and with our community, and we're gonna keep doing this work.
Thank you for the question. You know, when, as I think about the question of when I was speaking, it's like, yeah, there's an answer to the question, but then there's also an approach. This is an approach to people and how to engage with people. And what that, what automatically comes to mind when I think about that is, listening. What is the person telling me? Not literally with their words, but with their body language, right? That matters. Also, being accessible to them. My number one priority is to make sure that the decision-makers at Eastside are easily accessible to the community that we serve. The community is large. It's composed of many education partners. It's composed of many stakeholders, right? Some, as crazy as it sounds, like our students are mainly stakeholder, right? Doesn't vote for us. And so for me, something that I'm always holding is, how do we make sure that our student voice is at the table, right? When I was in high school, I had no idea what a school board member was. It wasn't until I became a teacher or started seeing these issues at the school side, how do I overcome these obstacles? And then I kept on digging and digging, and then I heard about this position of a school board member and how they build policy. Like, I wanna be talking to my school board members. I wanna engage. I wanna make sure that the voices of our community are at the table. And so that's something that's always top of mind for me. So I go to all the school sites, I go to other community events all across the district. And let me tell you, it is so much fun to be with people, to learn from people, to listen to people. But for me, it's not expecting people to come to us. It's our responsibility to come to you, to make sure that we are accessible, and that is my commitment.
Well, my board colleagues already said very good things about our community outreach, about focus group, about one of those stakeholders that we work together, and we're gonna reach out to different groups when we have some decision to make, you know, on the policy. So I think that's really very interesting, that we work very hard. And one thing I'm always proud of my board, that we have two representative for Latino community and two representative for Vietnamese community, you know. And I think that we work together collaboratively. We want to reach out to a larger community out there, and we listen to them. And I think it's, I'm very proud, just like my board colleagues. I visit school, and I'm talking to teachers, talking to staff, talking to the student. So we learn from them. What can we do better? In the sense of, is that when we reach out to them, so we have the communication. And I know that from a marketing standpoint of view, we have done this very good job to really reach out to different sector, different community. But we really have the diversity staff. We have the community parents specialists. We have a different counselor and social worker that address the need of that group. Because very important, just like some student might intimidate, they would not want to talk to another group that is uncomfortable. But if they have the same person, that the same ethnic group, they probably will feel more comfortable to address the issue. So I think we listen to the community, and we are working together, and we want to put our student first. And I'm really glad that we also have the student government board. We listen to them, and that is one thing that we will work together.
Well, Emma, this is, I'm gonna come back to you. One of the board's primary responsibilities is hiring and evaluating the superintendent. You, like everybody, just hire a superintendent. What qualities you believe are most important in the superintendent? And what criteria will you use to evaluate the superintendent?
Yes. We are very lucky to have one, and he is very lucky to have us.
How do you say that, Rob?
You know, we, I, I do believe we went through a very rigorous process in searching for a superintendent. As one of the candidates earlier today mentioned, as a board, this is one of the most important decisions that we make, because this is the leader essentially of the district, right? We support him in setting the vision and direction, but he really makes sure that it's executed and that we have the staff and everything and everyone in place to make sure that it happens. So this has to be somebody that we have a deep belief in, somebody who is grounded in community, someone who understands the east side, sees all the opportunities, understands the challenges, and is ready to take it on. I look for a visionary leader. I look for an instructional leader, because we gotta know what good teaching and good learning looks like in order to have an impact in our schools. And it's more complex, though, than just instruction, right? It's, it's really looking at the whole community and how are all those things interwoven, right? And when I think about Glenn, he brings a lot of that. He also is bicultural. He speaks multiple languages. He connects, he's been in our community for a number of years. I actually, when I started teaching at Matson Middle School, he had just left. And I remember he had left to be a principal at James Lake. And I remember all the teachers talking about Glenn Vandersee, Glenn Vandersee. You have to meet this principal, she's so amazing. Everybody goes, who is this Glenn Vandersee? And the university has added it. It's glad for us to press paths again. But Glenn is someone who I have a lot of faith in, in doing a great work, doing great work and really taking our district to the next level.
Yeah, I know that this recruiting and the superintendent is very important for the board, and it's one of the tough decisions when we have so many other candidates out there. But we chose superintendent Glenn Vandersee with the, a lot of quality that we look into from one superintendent. He has very good quality. He earned the trust. He is aligned with all the fundamental. He understands the community, and he's, he's the best candidate. And I know we made very hard decision. We have all these good candidates too. But he is one that we chose, and we want to keep this superintendent, you know, for another 10, 20 years, because we want to measure, you know, we want to have a performance evaluation. We are looking to a key performance measure. We gonna do, we do whatever we need to do in order to have a best candidate, but we're gonna keep this best candidate to work for our district. And he's supporting our vision, carry our mission. And since he's on the board, and I think everyone could come back and work in a good environment. So I think we're glad to make that good decision. But the part of us is, I really want to see somebody that really understands the culture. And he has the good quality that we are looking forward and working with him. And we want to give him, you know, another term, 10, 20 years, because we need somebody that have the continuation of work.
There, my colleagues have been referring to our superintendent, Superintendent Glenn Vandersee, and we hired him a year, a year and a half ago, or just a year? Last summer is when he started. We recruited external candidates, and we interviewed seriously and had finalists, and we ended up picking someone from within the organization who was clearly the leading candidate, bilingual, bicultural, speaks Spanish fluently, and is multicultural in his way of being. So we look for someone in terms of qualities who has a multicultural sensibility, because this is a diverse district. And there's a difference between administrative ability, executive management capability, and leadership, you know, to mention. Leadership is often missing even with executive managers, and that is an ability to persuade and enroll people, not to rely on a hierarchy, but to actually be influential, even though you don't have to necessarily persuade people. You can just make a decision and set it in motion. Glenn has a sense of the art, Glenn Vandersee, superintendent, has a sense of the art of leadership and the elements of persuasion, and, and, and we're so fortunate. And he has an associate superintendent, Associate Superintendent Theresa Marquez, who is also an incredible educator with visionary sense of, as a former principal and a longtime educator, of what can be done between those two, Superintendent Glenn Vandersee and Associate Superintendent Theresa Marquez. Wow, I will put that educational leadership team up against anyone in the state or the nation. We are poised for breakthroughs in the years ahead.
Thank you. I think then we have to, Ma'am, well. Question two is, what are, if, when reelected, what are your top three priorities in the community?
Top three priorities began with an equitable approach to academic achievement, meaning that those that need more resources are allocated more resources to close what is not only an achievement gap, but an opportunity gap. Because if people don't have resources to put them on some kind of leveled playing field, they're always behind in some way or another. And our district is committed to working with each student as they are. We're not asking them to be anything other than who they are. It's oriented to a personal approach, to open personal relationships. So academic achievement with an equity emphasis is number one. Number two is that the social, emotional, and academic impacts of COVID were significant. And they're playing still through the system, and we're addressing them with the resources we have, but also mobilizing more resources. And we have eight theater districts, eight theater districts that coming to, the students coming to the Eastside High School District. And the impacts there are moving through, through the educational system and arriving at our doorstep for the Eastside Union High School District. Addressing COVID impacts is a priority in the immediate future. And number three is really just to continue advocating to the state legislator, to state legislators, and to community leadership for the resources that public education continues to need. The Wisman High School District in Mountain View gets twice the funding per student than we do. And we have a third case for needing more resources.
All right. So on a top three, and then going to them in more detail. One, I mentioned the first one earlier today. Making sure that key decision-makers are easily accessible to the community, key decision-makers like ourselves. Two, having the newest technology available for our students and staff. paired with innovative programs to support us in moving forward. Three, retaining and supporting our teachers and staff. So when I, when I, when I say making sure decision makers are easily accessible to the community that we serve, it's from little things to, from making our board meeting public times easily accessible. It's going to different events, different schools, to talk to people, to hear what is top of mind, our constituents, all of them. When I speak to the second priority, having our newest technology and innovative programs to support us in moving the district forward, mean continuing things like East Side Access. East Side Access is a program that been able to push these past two years in collaboration with the City of San Jose. It's essentially free Wi-Fi, permanent Wi-Fi in the highest needs areas of the East Side. That's 300,000 people that will have free internet, free internet. And that was a lot of intentional collaboration with the City of San Jose. And when I think about our students in the classrooms, social, emotional learning is key, right? We can have the most rigorous instruction, but if our students are not mentally present, how are they going to actually take in the learning? And so we need to take a whole child approach to have support for them, not just so that they can meet the requirements to be college and career ready, but so that they can be human too and be able to move forward. The third one, retaining and supporting our teachers and staff. We need to make sure that we build the capacity of our educators. Teaching is harder than ever. And we need to make sure that we continue having competitive benefits and time. Sorry, I thought it was better to talk.
All right. My three top priorities is closing the opportunity gap by preparing our student for college and career readiness and enhance this Spartan Promise. The second one, that is ensuring school accountability and school and environment safety. And the third one is support and bring more resources for mental health, wellness, continue your life, and bridging the digital divide. So I want to elaborate a bit more. What I believe that with the closing of opportunity gap and also we have the equity is we want to prepare for our student. And they want to really believe that, you know, East Side staff, teachers, administrators, that are behind our student and put our student first. Besides that, we have the Spartan Promise that we encourage our student to continue to go to a higher education. By doing that, that we already promise that we have the spot for them at San Jose State University. And I think, remember President Herrera and I, we attend the scholarship just last week for Spartan Promise Scholarship. Now, we're looking about fiscal accountability. I know that we want to still balance the budget. We don't want to have any layoffs, you know, teachers and staff. It's very difficult. We work with administrators, hopefully that we have the funding to, you know, address all of this issue that we have, like you take away a lot of time from the teacher to do the COVID tests, you know, all of this stuff. And we make sure that we have the school environment safety. We work with our safety team in East Side. And we want to make sure when the students, staff, and teachers come to school, they know that they feel safe when they come to school. The next one is bridging the digital divide. My colleagues already mentioned that, I know in the right now time.
Thank you. So I think we're back to you. Okay. So this is one from the audience. Many of the high school youth that come to Grace Church say that high schools are very competitive. They don't see this as positive. How can you address this competitive nature at the high schools?
Is this stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
This is an audience question.
Yeah, thank you for the question. The first thing that comes to my mind is the culture that we're building, right? Because it starts with us as role models for our students. As board members, we set the vision and direction, what that looks like, what that sounds like, what that feels like everywhere we go, right? And then everyone follows from there. And so for me, it's important that we ensure that our staff that are directly engaging with our students understand what that means, especially coming back from the pandemic. I don't know one student that doesn't need support at a different level than they did prior to the pandemic, right? And so as a school district for me, I deeply believe that it is our responsibility to figure out how to support the students, right? And so we're coming up with these new challenges that are unprecedented, that we didn't know were going to be a thing coming out of pandemic. So building the capacity of our educators, of our staff, so that they know, one, how to process themselves so that they can be their best selves? And then, two, how to support our students? So then that can then disseminate into the culture that we want to be true, right? And so it starts with us so that we can support them in becoming who they want to become, not just as individuals, but as a collective. And making sure that that also is true with whoever works with us in the district. Making sure that people know this is how we work with and how we are with each other when it comes to East Side. We are committed to equitable communities in East Side. And equitable community starts with welcoming our students as they are. And that looks different. And so how do I engage with someone else when it is different than what I am or how I operate? And so that's part of the work that we have.
Thank you.
Oh, could you repeat the question?
Sure. Many of the high school youth that come to Grace Church say that high schools are very competitive. And they don't see this as a positive. How do you address competition and competitiveness at the high school?
Well, I know that a lot of students came from Feda School, Feda District, and they start to come to high school. And we need to welcome them, open them. And we have some of the program check around all of the students so they don't feel intimidated because in a different environment where they come from, from middle school. And I know that we need to work together collaboratively with staff, teachers, you know, administrators. We want to make sure that every student come to our district feel dialed and welcome. And we treat them fairly, treat them that we want to work with them and we want to support them. Without the support, they would not going to be offensive. And I know that as the English workers, as well as the special education student, other foster youth, homeless youth, we have a lot of the student in our district. We're going to address them differently by looking to the issue that what we can help them, work with them, and bring them to the environment that they can feel that they trust us. They feel safe when they talk with us about the issue from their family. During the COVID nineteen, a lot of issues happened to our student as well as, you know, for teachers as well as staff. But as the board, we have to beyond that. And how can we help them? How can we support them? MTSF with a lot of program that we continue to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Manuel?
Before I start, I keep missing one word in your opening thing. And that is, you're talking about middle students coming?
No, it's many in high school.
Excuse me?
Many of the high school youth that come to the district say that high schools are very competitive.
Okay. So thank you all for starting your response. Everything really rides on a sense of being seen and being connected with those around you, whether it's a teacher that notices you and engages you or other students that also see you and hold space with you, administrators and principals. It, I remember an experience in high school where a guidance counselor, and you know, he was not just friendly, but he engaged me and talked to me. I eventually became student by the president at Overfell High School where I graduated from. And he invited me to his home to meet his wife and his children and have dinner with them. And it's like the Pope or the Queen had invited me. You know, I tell you, I bathed three times and ironed my shirt and drove, drove over there. And I sat at that table feeling extraordinary. And it goes so far when, when young people especially are seen by elders or those who are older. Everything else takes its own context or a different perspective. If it's competition, if it's difficulty, whatever it is, there's more within to engage life. And I would just say again, it depends on connection, depends on being seen. Thank you.
Two more questions and then you can do the summary. Which turn is? So there's many other programs, it is, of that, for you can. Pick one of them, the one that, that's closest to you and just talk about that program.
All right. One of the programs that I feel very close to me is my niece, several nieces and nephew who attend the Independence High School. And they are first year generation to attend the school here. And they told me that the Abbott Program is the program that they really like it. In terms of their small classroom and the teacher being with them the whole time. And they continue to make the progress and they learn. And with the peers that they have in school, they build that kind of trust and relationship for that four years. So to me, the Abbott Program, I also, also asked, you know, administrator to have that Abbott Program to every school site because I know this worked for my niece and nephew and it worked for most of the student that come from different background, that maybe they're integrated or, and they want to have some stability that when they come to the school and they feel good that somebody going to really pay attention to them in a small glass size and also pay more attention to them. So to me, Abbott Program is the program that I really want to push forward and also want to help the student because I was one time as a refugee, when I came to the United States, I didn't have one word of English. But I'm learning and I have to push me out because when I had got to the 12th grade and I don't have time, they have to push me out because I'm 18 years old at that time. So they have to push me out that I didn't have time to learn English.
Thank you. Emma?
You mentioned a couple of programs, but I think there's a basic principle at work here. And I'm really proud of you of the East Side High School District because we offer small but necessary schools, academies, magnet programs. We try to find what is it that can meet the need of this child, of this student? And it is that diversity and approach, just as well as differentiated styles of teaching that reach our kids. We're, we're, we're doing, I believe, a laudable job of meeting our students where they are. And we're going to continue to do that work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Three things came to mind. I know you said one.
You have your hits?
All right. Abbott, Abbott saved my life. Spartan Promise, you owed it to Spartan Promise. And the way that East Side thinks about programs and how to support and engage our students. It's a multi-tier system of support called MTSF. And so MTSF specifically, it's, it's split up into two, two, two things, if you will. One, what are the instructional supports or the academic supports that our students are going to need to thrive? That looks different in every classroom. That looks different with every, every school, with every teacher. And so every school has its own way of interpreting, how do we set up programs that meet the needs of this specific community from the instructional side, but also from the behavioral, the engagement side? Some people think, well, okay, when, when you go into teaching, all right, what, what is your open sequence? That's like, what is your plan for teaching month by month? And, you know, you expect to see all the standards for a specific, a specific subject. And then separately, what is your culture plan? How are you going to build culture in your class? But good teaching is a combination of both. They're not separate, they're together. And so what MTSF does is put that together so that our teachers and our staff know what it is that our students in classrooms need so that they can thrive. And it goes beyond the teachers. It's the, the other staff, the parent educators, it's the principals, it's the counselors, and the, and the, the counselors, the social workers, and the kinds of supports that they engage with in partnership with the teachers and staff. So that's one thing that I think is amazing about East Side. And I'm at ten seconds, so I'm going to be respectful of my time.
Thank you. Question from the audience. How important is sleep for children? When they assign with homework, keeps them up late every night? The pressure to do well and not be healthy is hard physically and mentally. What would you change? And so I think we are to Manuel.
You know, this is more than an issue for any one school district. And obviously, the state of California is seeking to move the needle in this area by mandating earlier start, excuse me, later start time. It, we've learned more about the biology of younger people, of students, and it seems that they do need more sleep, they do need later start in order to be optimal. I support those measures. And at the same time, when you make a structural change, like that, it ripples across the system and it impacts everything. So there are adjustments that are still being worked out. But I don't think we're done in this area. And then, of course, there's personal responsibility and parental possibility, excuse me, parental responsibility for ensuring that a decent amount of sleep is gained and chosen and had by students. But I do recognize the reality that sleep is one of the central ways to enable the brain to function at a more optimal level, and especially at younger ages. Thank you.
My gosh, if I hadn't of gone eat sleep, like I can't remind myself, and I don't care, I could have not allowed him to sleep. So I empathize with our students, especially as they're developing. To my colleague's point, there is some legislation that has it so that school starts, starts are later because David tells us that our students need that sleep in order for them to thrive. We're learning a lot from this legislation and trying to figure out what does it mean and how do we set up the district and everybody within the district to really kind of get adjusted to this new change, right? Because it has implications and other, other pieces of, of the day. But, you know, when, when questions like this come up, something that comes to my mind is, what is at the root of the issue? And how is it different in every community, right? East Side is so diverse. And so I would want our schools to figure that out, to engage with the community, all of their different stakeholders, to figure out where is the opportunity here and then build out a plan to support it because it's going to look different across the board.
Thank you. So now one minute, oh, I'm sorry. Then we will go to that. Jenny, my shit.
Oh, thank you. I want to listen. Now, I knew with my colleagues that our board only make a decision to start the school later, at eight thirty. And we know that these survey that we come out that we need to have a student to have enough sleep. But one question that you mentioned about homework. This matter is, student has a lot of homework. But the part of us is, how do we can help them to do the homework in the time that they are in school? We do have the tutor time on, on, on the site as well as we have the online tutoring. So I think that student probably need to utilize it so they can do the homework, so they can help them do work, so they don't have to have a lot of homework or they're late at home. So they can have work on the So they can have work on the homework after school program or they can work with a teacher. Because I know that it's not that easy when a student has like five classes. And I know that we have heard about some students have like five APA classes. That's a lot of homework for a student to take in and to really do a good job. Need to learn and to do homework, tests and quizzes. So I'm thinking there's maybe a way that the counselor will work closely when we think about if the student has too many classes and they have very heavy classes. Maybe they would recommend the student and talk with the parent to see that if they can accommodate those classes. Because otherwise, they're gonna feel stressed out and they're gonna give up. So that's how I think we're gonna handle that.
Thank you. So we're gonna go with two-minute closing statements. I know. You don't fit up healthy use at all, but you have about two minutes. And I think, then we start with you. Everybody pointing to you.
Tell me and I go. I'll be brave, surprisingly. I am a mother. I am a student. A teacher. I'm a principal of our Eastside community. I am ready to make sure that our students have access to the best education possible. That is what I dedicated my whole professional career to. That is what I'm committed to doing the rest of my professional career. I'm ready so our kids can be the best versions of themselves, but most importantly, reach their dreams. Our kids have dreams. I want them to know that when they leave Eastside, they have all the skills that they need so that they can reach their dreams and make the decisions that they wanna make and it not be decided for them. So tonight, I humbly ask that you reelect me to Eastside Union and San Jose District School Board. Thank you for your time tonight.
Well, I'm ready to create effective and forward-thinking policy which positively impact education and student. From my experience, leadership, and passion for twelve years, I hope to continue to serve the Eastside District. And my fellow board members have productively worked together to put our student first and we have balanced our vision. But we are in the right track. But there's more to do. During my tenure, student academics test score and graduation rates have increased along with the number of aligarians. During and after the pandemic, we provide technology resource and safety supports to our students by strengthening school rates and their house services. We accomplished many projects throughout the district, building classrooms, student union, cafeteria, new tour for the stadium, upgrading technology, installing security cameras, and modernizing facilities. I'm very glad that I have a very good board. And I'm honored that I have endorsement of all my board colleagues, along with the state senator Dave Cotevzey, Post Supervisor O'Toole Reese, Cindy Chavez, and many more endorsements, especially Eastside Teacher Association. Let's continue to work together to create excellence in our Eastside school. I would like to honor to have your vote. Thank you.
Public education revolutionized my life and the life of my family. My father had a fifth-grade education and was a laborer all his life. My mom, an eighth-grade education, a homemaker all her life. They raised six kids. I don't know how my dad did it on an hourly wage at a greenery warehouse as a laborer. But there is something to be said about the commitment that our community has to public education. I had mentioned earlier about, I dropped out of Cater Garden in the 1950s because they weren't ready for kids like me. But along the way, because I spoke only Spanish and I don't know how I did it when I came back in the first grade. But if you fast forward several years, well, if you fast forward to 1998, the Herrera family was honored as Hispanic Family of the Year at Black Tide and held at the San Jose Fairmont Hotel, attended by more than 1,000 civic leaders. They produced a video of our family. My brother has criminal trial attorney. My other brother retired as a superintendent for the Orchard School District. My other brother was a local businessman. My sister apparently